Thank you so much. Do we realize the mic's? We don't need the mics?
No.
The Situate School Committee is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. We'll call the August 25th, 2025 school committee meeting to order tonight at 6:16 PM. And we will start with a roll call vote. Lindwong?
Here.
Thelma?
Here.
Gates?
Yes.
Or Kowski? Brandalini? Here. Start with public comment. See, nobody knows. Remote. Nobody remote. Good. Turn it over to Superintendent Burkhead for a leadership report tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Brandalini.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Today officially started the kickoff for our staff returning and our opening day congregation this morning at 8:00 AM. So two of our celebrations that we have traditionally there are welcoming our new staff and introducing them to the entire community. Principals come up and do that, directors. We had twenty new, twenty-seven new staff members celebrated this morning as well as celebrating years of service for our veteran teachers that have committed time to the Situate Public Schools for twenty years or more. We have an increments of five years. This year, we had ten staff members hit the twenty-year mark. We had nine reach the twenty-five-year mark, and we had two at thirty years. And we have multiple in between there as well. So quite an honor and quite the time in one place. So a really special time this morning to celebrate them. The theme this year, we spoke on is our students, our stories. And the emphasis will be on the, our highest priority on students, their successes, their challenges, and their triumph over challenges and valuable lessons learned. And we hope to do that in various ways throughout the year with our school community and invite you all to share your stories as well about our kids. Also, in preparation for this year, we had a busy summer. And I want to thank our outstanding custodial team for the great work they've done in making the places look brand-new, safe, clean, and ready to go for our students on Wednesday and for our staff today as the staff come back and get their classrooms ready. Continue to do that to create positive learning environments. Also, I want to thank the administrative assistants that worked over the summer as well as many of our teachers and staff that worked with students over the summer in any of our programming. We also held our district, annual district leadership retreat with principals, central office, directors, department chairs, and STA leadership also was welcome to that meeting as been tradition. I think it was very productive and focused this year was on reviewing, assessing, and revising with laser focus our student learning goals for the year. And just recently, in the last couple of weeks, we worked and collaborated with our school committee on our annual retreat with the school committee and also participated on professional development with, that was led by the Mass Association of School Committees. And finally, we continued our work, which is ongoing, on the new school building project. And Dr. Rab will be presenting a little bit on that in more detail. And I think in later meetings, we'll talk about the work of a new subcommittee that, or working group that was started this summer on naming the school. So that's interesting and exciting. We are ready to welcome our students back, grades one through twelve, on Wednesday, the August 27th, pre-K and K on September 2nd. And we look forward to seeing you all. That's my update for tonight. Thank you.
You there, Superintendent Burkhead? Dr. Rab?
Thank you, Mrs. Brandalini. Hold on me one moment just to bring up the PowerPoint. So this is the same presentation that we showed the school building committee last week. And the great news is that we've been able to recommend a general contractor for the project. So the big next step in the project is procuring a general contractor, and we've been able to do that. Before I do that, I thought it might be appropriate at the beginning of the school year just to update the committee on where is the project at? Where are we at timeline? Are we on time? Are we on budget? And we are very much on time and very much under budget. So it's wonderful news all the way around. And I did, I'm joined this evening by Allison Maher from Vertex, our OPM, as well as Donald Walter, the architectural firm, Dora Whittier, the architectural firm that is working with us on the project. So if you have any really hard questions, we're going to refer them to them. Otherwise, I'll run through this PowerPoint. So again, we'll talk about the project schedule, a little bit of information about the groundbreaking. We've been able to secure that date and about the general contractor and where we're at with the bids. The big vote this evening is on the general contractor. I'll incorporate that into the presentation. And then after the presentation, if the committee is okay with it, then we can do a separate motion to vote and discuss the actual motion. So as we look at the project schedule, we're very much on time. So the red line, we've been following that red line through. We're in the middle of 2025 with an expected completion of the summer of 2027. And it's been a bit of a scramble in August. So we filed our subcontractor bids, our general contractor bids would do on August 7th. And we're anticipating a notice to proceed on August 28th in anticipation of the positive vote that we received from the school building committee last week. And then a positive vote this evening, we'll be able to proceed with our general contractor. But everything is right on time and exactly where you want to be in a project like this. Typically, schools take two years to build. That includes about a year and a half of actual building and then about six months of outfitting. So the expectation, if you look on there, building completion, March 2027. And then between March 2027 and June, July is when we buy all the furniture, put all the technology in, and kind of get the building ready to go for occupancy in September of 2027. A lot of that scramble that summer is being able to demolish the existing Hathley building and then create a parking lot in its place. And so we'll talk a little bit about some of that later. But a big part of the schedule is making sure all of that happens on time over that summer. But it's great news. The project is going right according to schedule, and we're still on track for 2027. In terms of some more specific calendaring, we do meet with our school building committee on a regular basis. We met on August 20th. We'll meet again on September 24th. And again, the big news here is that we'll be able to hopefully award the contractor, contractor the next couple of weeks. And I'll talk about kind of where that's going. And then if you look toward October, the groundbreaking, groundbreaking, excuse me, has been scheduled for October 6th. So this is a big day, a big morning, an opportunity for the MSBA to come out and celebrate the project, for the town to come out, school committee, school building committee to come out and celebrate the project. We've talked to Mrs. Sheen perhaps about having some coral groups, combined coral from Cushing and Hathley, which that's all very preliminary. But just to try to get some student participation. But it's a fun thing. If you've ever seen it, everybody gets a shovel, big pile of dirt, and that's a lot of fun. And it really kicks off the project. So that is settled. We have commitment from the MSBA. We have commitment from anybody we need commitment from for that date now. So let's talk a little bit about the bids. I don't know how to view that bottom bar there. But so as we mentioned, I think in an earlier meeting, we had, we have to pre-qualify general contractors. And then we're actually four contractors that we've requalified. One didn't bid for a number of reasons. They just chose not to bid. So we had three bids at the end of the day. Bray Brothers was the lowest bid at seventy-eight point two million, and that includes the alternate. The alternate was a turf field. So to make the current field there a turf field, we put as an alternate because we really weren't sure where the bids were going to come in, and we wanted the freedom to not do that if it became too expensive. So total price with the alternate is seventy-eight point two million. And you'll notice that the other two bidding companies weren't that far behind at eighty-one point eight, eighty-two point seven. Break Builders, right out of Marshfield, is a local company. It's hard to say why they came in much cheaper than the others, but I think one of the reasons is simply that they're close by. It doesn't take much for them to mobilize. They're fifteen minutes away. They don't have to create, they will have a trailer on site, but it's not an hour and a half ride every time they want to do something or communicate. I had great experience with them. They were the builders at Center Elementary School in Hanover, and they did an excellent job about ten years ago. And I worked with them personally, so whatever that's worth. But they're fantastic. So the recommendation tonight is to vote for Break Builders as our general contractor. And they are hot to trot. I was on the phone with John Leview this morning. They want to get going. They're ready to go. They want to start building construction fences and digging things and having fun. So it's really going to start happening very soon after this vote. We have had a little bit of a glitch in, oh, let me talk a little bit more about the money before we talk about glitches. So one of the wonderful things is that we really are saving about sixteen million dollars from the original bid. So all along, starting with the SD construction budget, which the town voted on, which is a construction budget of ninety-five point two million dollars. Now remember, that's the construction budget. The total project budget's a hundred and twenty million. The other difference is the architectural fees, the OPM fees, and all the other soft costs of the project. But the construction budget, which is what went out to bid, was ninety-five point two. All through the spring, starting in January, and then again in March and in June, we have been seeing the estimates go down. And I think we reported in June that we were looking at a seven or eight million dollar savings at that point. We received these bids two weeks ago, and now we're looking at the better part of a sixteen point four billion dollar reduction. So the good news is that's money the town won't have to borrow. That'll be a positive impact to the taxpayers. It'll be money that's never borrowed and we won't have to use. The bad news is, or the alternate news is, is that the MSBA will adjust our project funding agreement accordingly. So we don't get to keep the sixteen million dollars from the MSBA. So they will adjust the project funding agreement. They've already sent Mr. Burkhead a nice three-page email, explained to him exactly how to do that and what's going to happen. And then our OPM will handle that for us. But it's great news. It's great news for the project, and it really allows us all to kind of take a breath of sigh of relief in terms of moving forward. We know this project is on budget, actually way under budget, and very much on time. So the appropriation that we had will well cover the project, and in fact, we won't be borrowing anywhere near what we town voted on, which is awesome. So just a couple of things that we're dealing with. One of the issues is with electrical contractors is the, we had to pre-qualify several electrical contractors, and the general contractor then gets to choose among those pre-qualified electrical contractors. Right now, the lowest bid is filed, is being contested by the second and third lowest bids. And it's gone all the way to the Attorney General's office. There's a current case right now in the Attorney General's office. And we asked the Attorney General, we said, you know, nothing, nothing, but we really want to get the general contractor on board. Do we have to wait until this bid process plays out before we get the general contractor on board? Because, you know, they haven't even scheduled a hearing yet. It's likely going to be the end of September, beginning of October. It could be a couple of months before that's settled. So because it is very specific to a very specific part of how generals file sub-bids are done, the AG's office gave us permission to award the contract to the general contractor. So they're just going to have to be a little soft in terms of how they award an electrical contractor. Luckily, there's a couple of issues, and Allison, feel free to jump in on this, but I'm going to, I'm going to try and summarize it. If I do a real bad job, then feel free to jump in.
Okay.
Basically, you know, this, the issue with electric is there are long lead times for electrical panels, almost fifty-two weeks to order electrical panels and some of the bigger stuff that goes into the school. So because it's a year-long lead time, Break Brothers, the new contractor, wants to be able to order them sooner rather than later. And so it's a big risk for them if they were to contract with an electrical contractor while it's under dispute. And so that's something they have to figure out. You know, what do they want to do? The biggest issue for electricity right away is powering the trailer and some of the things that aren't quite as, as big of a deal. And I think, you know, we can figure that out. But at the end of the day, we've been working very closely with town council to make sure that we are well represented. It was crystal clear in town council's response to the AG that there was no mistake on the part of the town or a part of the bidding process. This is just something the three subcontractors go and add it. And that's fine. It happens. We just have to wait and let that kind of settle out. So it doesn't impact our ability to award the general contractor. And then once we do that, the general contractor gives contracts to all of the sub-bids, so we're not involved in that piece of it. How much of a risk Break ultimately wants to take or not take based on how this place goes is really up to them. So that's a short version of what was, how did I do, Allison?
Great, yeah. I think you covered it.
So can I ask a quick, quick question? So the overall amount of the Break Brothers, Break Builders, sorry, contract? We, we settle on that amount and that's the final amount regardless of what happens next?
Exactly. The only thing that would influence that would be change orders. So there, you know, there are always some change orders. Things change, things happen. But that is the bottom line of the contract. So Break Brothers, when they did the bid, they incorporated the prices of all the filed sub-bids as well as their own subcontractors. And so that's the price they moved. So the vote this evening is really simple, to recommend that the town enter into contract with Break Brothers. And we did put a, I don't know what you want to call it, but basically a codicil in the vote that allows anything to change. Because right now, that seventy-eight point two would change a little bit if the AG awarded the contract to the second or third lowest electrical subcontractor. If you look, and it's not, I mean, it's a lot of money, but it's not millions and millions. So, you know, if, if in fact they awarded the second bid, it would be an extra two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand. If they awarded to the third bid, it would be an extra nine-hundred-and-twenty thousand. Significant amount of money, but well within what we appropriate. So we can handle that, and that would be the only thing that would change that if the AG came back later and said, you know, you have to go with somebody other than the lowest electrical contractor. So it allowed, this vote allows for that to happen without another vote. If that makes any sense. You're not going to vote for it again. And then I'll come back to that. So what I would recommend is let me finish this PowerPoint, and then we can come back and vote. But we can vote now. I'd probably better just to finish and then come back and have a supper. So a couple of things, just as we begin, it's going to get very busy at Hathley very soon, within the next two or three weeks. And one of the things that we have to do immediately is a temporary playground right in the front of the school. So there's a temper, the playground in the back, it's going to be behind the construction fence. And then once that happens, we need to put a temporary playground in the front. The school building committee authorized that to happen, authorized us to build one. We already ordered it. The, we're right in the business right now of getting the contractor in place. So we've ordered the materials, and then the contractor had to go out to a public bid. I'm not sure if that whole process is finished yet, but it's right on the tail end of being finished. And we have that playground. It's nineteen or twenty stations right in the front of the building. It's a great temporary playground. And then two years from now, when we don't need it, it'll be up to the town school committee, school building committee to decide what to do with it. But it won't stay where it is. But it'll provide the students a playground during construction.
Can I ask another quick question?
Sure.
Sorry. At Hathley, there are currently two playgrounds in the back of the school. So I'm assuming that the ones, if you're facing the building on the left, will be inside the fence.
Yes.
Will the other one in the back still just be?
I think it's on this picture. No, it's not. It's whichever one is way in the back corner, that's the one that's being replaced. So on the left will be behind the fence.
Up in the trees.
Yeah. They'll let big kids play.
Yes.
Like, kind of, it's not a big kid.
Almost possible. Allison, can you help me out with that?
Yes, so the one that's dotted in red, that's the one, the existing playground right now that's being replaced. But we're going to work with the contractor to keep that online so the kids are never without a playground. So as we build the new temporary playground in green, we're, we're going to work with them to make their construction fence where that yellow line is so that we're hoping to, you know, keep a playground online at all times.
I have a question. Is the cost of this temporary playground, where is that, built into this project as well?
It's built into the project budget. It's beyond the seventy-eight point two million, but we're using money available in the overall hundred-and-twenty million.
And this could be at a later date transferred to it or from site, right?
It could.
And this is going to be ADA accessible, that sort of stuff, we need to be aware of this.
It's an important place where we're put on it.
Roughly, I'm, I'm just curious, roughly, no playgrounds are, I'm just curious.
So three hundred thousand.
And we did get bids in, and they did come in a little bit under. It's about eighty-eight thousand for the equipment and a hundred-and-sixty-six thousand was the low for the site work for it. So a little bit.
Credit you first.
It's so crazy how expensive playgrounds are.
They are. I know, it's really good.
But it's great that it can be continued to be used after its purpose. Right? That's a good investment over, over time, you know?
It's definitely a good investment. I think one thing the school building committee was told, and they were honest, was that this is being procured as a temporary playground. It's got a two- to five-year shelf life. It doesn't have the twenty-year shelf life of the playground we just put in at Jenkins, for example. You know, so while, you know, you might think, oh, we just put another school, school playground's got a lot of use. So it might be more appropriate with this in more of a town park or something like that. It'd be a little bit less.
See how long it gets out of it. Right. Christine Shannon, they did a really good job of knowing what students would be using it for and where it was going and what its purpose was and knowing what they had to work with and in the space that they had and getting the best quality they could find for the students that have it.
Yeah.
It's got a lot. It, it looks, it's, it looks like a really nice.
It does look really nice.
Yeah. I mean, I'm surprised it won't, I have faith that it will last as long as they can get out of that. I'm surprised.
We're doing Ford and Place Rubber. I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt.
Is it only going to last that long, really?
It's rated for two to five, but who knows? I mean, plenty of playgrounds that last longer.
Yeah.
Is it rated that long because of the way it's being installed?
No, it's just there are different qualities of the playgrounds. And so it's just the quality of it. The more expensive, you know, the one in Jenkins was over four hundred thousand, so it's just more expensive.
And this is like, did you say technically two hundred?
Two, two forty?
Eighty plus one sixty-six.
Okay. Yeah.
I learned a long time.
Mostly site work.
We're site work.
Really only, yeah.
Yeah.
So if you're interested in what happens with this spot after we remove the playground?
This spot is, yeah. What stream?
This will be like, stream.
I'll show you. You can actually see it.
It'll be the parking lot. Well, I guess it ought to be graded.
It'll be parking and a, and a permanent playground too in the middle. Where the old.
It's not shown on this, on this drawing, but where the new flattery field is going, the playground's going right next to it. And so it's actually going to be kind of nice. There'll be a playground right next to it.
It'll be, yes, both places, so.
So the reason I show this slide again is it's not so much to get into the details, but it's just to show that a lot's going to be happening. And so the OPM has really committed to, you know, constant communication with the school, constant communication with Mrs. Sheen and Hathley to make sure that they know that there are blackout times during pickup and drop-off when nobody can be on-site, trucks can't be rolling and all of that. And they will have a separate, separate construction entrance down where we currently store the vans. The vans are all going to move on-site near the high school. And so, you know, they'll have their own construction entrance. But even so, new electrical lines need to be put into power, new, some water, new sewer. I think at the end of the meeting, Mrs. Sheen just said, just give me a moat with a drawbridge, and we'll be good the rest of the time. But it's going to be a scramble. But I think, you know, really, we're working with excellent OPM, excellent architect, and now wonderful GC, who understands schools. I will tell you this, I work with Break, they understand schools. We were in a situation in Hanover where he had to build a temporary hallway, interior hallway, just to kind of make sure the kids could safely get from one part of the building to another, and he did it. I mean, this is the kind of school-based person you're getting, somebody who understands schools and understands what it means to have a school in session eighteen feet from where the construction is, so.
So we don't know, we won't know yet then until the contract is officially awarded, like the times of construction? Because I expect that they'll be there early, much before drop-off?
Yes, they'll have to load in early. So I'm not exactly sure what the town statutes are, but it's driven by town statute. I think it's seven o'clock in the morning. I don't think they're allowed in earlier than that. And there's, even on the other end, there is all driven by town statute. And the planning board, when they approved the project, were very clear with, with them that, you know, whoever the contractor is, we have to adhere to those times. But we have, once this gets going, there are weekly trailer meetings on-site, and they give us all the updates. So every week, representatives of the school administration, as well as the OPM, architect, and the GC meet. Usually, it's Tuesday mornings, and it's an opportunity for us to get all that information so that Mrs. Sheen has everything she needs to kind of tell everybody what's going on in the week. Gives her an opportunity too to talk to everybody and say, look, you know, there's something going on that you need to know. Maybe this is a special celebration. Can you move this? Can you do that? You know, they work with us. So that, so that's basically it in terms of a project update. Like I said, you'll start to see things moving in Hathley probably within the next month or so. And then certainly after the groundbreaking on October 6th, it'll really happen in earnest. So if we could go back to the motion, which I do believe you have in your, in your packets, this is what we need. The school building committee voted unanimously to approve the budget. And I'll ask for the school committee's consideration.
It's good. Make a motion on. It's been a.
I'll read it.
Okay.
Make a motion that the, to recommend that the town enter into a contract with, is it great? Great, right? Great?
Great.
Great. Great Builders for their base bid and alternate number one in the combined amount of seventy-eight million, two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, four-hundred-and-ten dollars. Further, should the Attorney General rule in favor of one of the other electrical filed subcontractors not included rates bid, then that recommendation will increase by the difference between the electrical low bid plus alternate and the successful protester's bid plus.
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Mrs. Brandwick. Right. Yes, roll call vote it is. Lindwong?
Yes.
Thelma?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Or Kowski?
Yes.
And Brandalini, yes. Okay. Passings unanimously. All right. Still on to you, Dr. Rab, once again.
Thank you very much. Give me one moment to bring up my budget closeout memo, which you have in your packets.
No problem.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Allison and Dawn.
Thanks, Dawn.
So I'll refer you to this memo. I don't know how to make that small, but actually, it's readable, so that's good. So this is closeout for FY '25. This is our budget that just ended at the end of June. And the great news here is that not only did we end in the black, which I'm legally required to do, but we ended with four-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. Which is awesome, right? So I'm sure the town will be very proud of our generous contribution to free cash. But no, it's great. And really, these, these, no, I'm sorry about that.
Good contributors.
So one of the, you know, as we look toward this, you know, you see some negatives, you see some positives. I did provide some end notes at the end just to try to describe some of the, some of the negatives and positives. But basically, what they come down to is evaluation in June. So things typically run fine. And then in May, we look at where are we at with the teaching lines? Where are we at with paraprofessionals? Have we been able to save money through leaves? Have we been able to save money through, you know, unfilled position or different things like that? And so you can see in the instruction line, you know, there was additional funding there in student services, which is primarily transportation. There was some additional funding there. We did very well in transportation this year. And that allowed us to buy some technology purchases. So the administration and technology line is negative only because they were given permission to buy chromo sets and stuff upfront in June. And then more importantly, with custodial and maintenance, I'll talk a little bit about that when we talk about the capital projects. But we're in the middle of the Jenkins window project right now. And one of the things that wasn't part of that budget was replacing all the shades in the building, all the blinds in the building. It just wasn't, we just couldn't include it in the one point two million. And because we had some availability in the instruction and student services lines in June, I was able to authorize a fifty thousand dollar payment to the Jenkins windows in June, work that had been done. That allowed us then, this year, we'll be able to replace all the blinds, and they're actually being installed today. So, so it's kind of neat. So they're, they're putting the blinds in temporarily. The windows won't be in until after September 6th, but they will be in in September. We've done all the prep work over the summer, again, long lead times, we had to wait on them. But it's an, it's an, it's an understanding of kind of why those things go negative. They don't go negative out of control. They go negative in a controlled way. And so it's just a matter of, we could take the time to adjust the instruction line and the student services line and the custodial line so that they were all zeros. But there's actually no fiduciary responsibility to do that. So I must have felt really strongly about it, just where it is. It doesn't have to be fixed as long as our bottom line is in the black. And then the encumbrances of that hundred-and-sixty-five thousand on the bottom line there in the grand total, that's again, pretty standard. We don't pay all of our bills at the end of June. Very often, we get bills in July and August that are part of the prior fiscal year, and we need to make sure that we have funds available for those. So if you look at the end notes there, I won't read them all. If you look at end note six and seven, which I know is tiny, and I apologize for that. One of the neat things is we have locked in our electricity prices until 2029. That is only one penny per kilowatt hour more than we're paying now. So we're paying twelve cents per kilowatt hour now. We'll be paying thirteen cents until 2029, which is fantastic if you know the volatility. twenty twenty-nine, which is fantastic, if you know the volatility, the volatility partly in electricity. Um, and with natural gas, uh, one of the reasons our custodial maintenance lines was over was not so much because natural gas has gotten more expensive, we pay a flat rate. It was just a cold winter, and so we just need to be aware of that as we're, as we're doing things. Um, but we actually locked in our natural gas from twenty-seven to thirty, cheaper than we're paying now. So we work with an electrical and gas consortium, and they get great rates for us, and so it, we really have budget certainty through twenty thirty for gas and electric, which allows us to really plan ahead and know where. And then again, you know, you see the negative in custodial and maintenance. Um, and I talked about the June payment for the Jenkins windows, we had some work with the Jenkins elevator, which you're all very well aware of, um, which cost a couple of bucks. Um, we did, you know, high school flooring, some cleaning at Hathley, we replaced the black box, painted black box theater floor, and we've done landscaping every year. Um, there was old money left in out of district tuitions because it was sufficient funding in circuit breaker and IDDA. So I think we ended the year in great shape, um, and we've started the year, we've made it clear to everybody who's asked that FY twenty-six is going to be a tight budget year, this year we're in, and that, you know, we're being careful, watching every penny, just like we always do, uh, but even more so. Um, and then we have financial forecast scheduled for Thursday morning, so we'll, we'll hear more then. This doesn't require a vote, it's just information only, but I'm happy to take any questions.
I have a question about the out of district tuition since we have that surplus. We have that account that we haven't played, we couldn't place a number of years back. The stabilization fund, is, do you know how much is in that or?
I don't know exactly what's in that, but we did have additional funds in circuit breaker, that, you know, you have to spend the circuit breaker fund within two years. And so there was twenty-eight thousand dollars that would have been left that Mrs. Holt at the special town meeting in November is going to recommend being put into the special education zone.
Okay.
So we're keeping that money from that, I didn't catch this in time to do that, but that was the idea.
This, um, curious, Tom, does the rate, um, the natural gas, right, and electricity, it sounds awesome, but does it, just because we're part of that consortium, doesn't matter how much we use that's fixed, because I'm just curious if closing a school and opening a new one will have any impact potentially on our agreement with this consortium?
It shouldn't, it shouldn't, I haven't heard that it will. Um, but it doesn't matter how much we use, it's the rate, but we'll.
But we're only involved in that consortium because we're situated public school?
And towns, it's, it's public, public entities.
Okay.
So towns and schools, and it allows us to lock in the rates, oftentimes the biggest issue is budgeting, and so.
Yeah.
So we want to be able to lock the rate in, they have been able to not only provide budget certainty, but reasonable rates as well.
At one point we had talked about the new school doing some, like, green energy initiatives, I know some of that's required in the MSBA process. Were we able to do anything extra?
Yeah, there's a lot of uptake, so on the move of the new building, so that'll help our electoral.
Oh, right, so that should also help, right, yeah.
We pay for what we use, so we don't use it.
Right.
Well, hopefully it'll be a warm winter and, um, the new school will.
Get lots of sound.
Couple of years will use less actively than what we're doing now.
That's right.
Only expect, but you don't really.
I mean, everything will be so much more efficient.
Yeah.
And warmer.
Yes, and warmer.
Triple paying glass, it helps, I mean, all the things in the new, in the new building will help with, with, with all efficiencies. And then, uh, if I could take a moment, if there's more questions on this, I'll jump to the capital.
Oh, no, actually, that was gonna be a question.
Okay.
For me.
Let me just take a quick moment and I'll jump to the capital.
Doctor McCosky, any questions? I don't wanna jump past.
For the capital, um. There we go, okay, it's very familiar, so the, I talked about the Jenkins windows, the other big, uh, capital project that we're doing right now is to have boys locker room at the high school, that's phase three of three for current projects. The reason I haven't done that whole presentation is those are still in progress, so the windows haven't been installed yet. Um, you know, I want to have a nice presentation a month from now, hopefully when everything's finished. The boys locker room, uh, but for the air conditioning is completed, they just put the windows in last week. Um, so we did, the, the, the athletes have been in there since the beginning of practices last week. And, uh, all, everything I've been told is that they love it, it's, it's a great space, so.
They love it.
So it's wonderful, and that completes that, that project, so that was a three-phase project for the gym locker rooms, the girls locker room and the boys locker room. And now the next phase of the high school is a large gym renovation floors and breaches, so really we're hoping to do that, uh, next summer. So that's the next thing on the, on the, on the list right now. And that's been on the list, it's just been creeping up from year to year. The two new things are Wompituck relatable, so the, we know right now we're doing ADA compliance at Wompituck for the bathrooms, we just did the nurse's office, we're sketching out all the bathrooms, that'll be done next summer, we're gonna paint it next summer, all that's already approved on the books, ready to go. The two things that we didn't consider, and the funding sources is kind of irrelevant to this list, but the, we talked about a playground, I think it came up in the school improvement plans. Wompituck needs an accessible playground that wasn't part of the ADA compliance article that we did for the six hundred and fifty thousand. Now, we could certainly float this as a regular article, we could also go to the CPC like Jenkins did. We could do a combined CPC and, um, you know, their, uh, their PTO, we haven't had any of those discussions yet, so it'd be very preliminary of this to, to suggest anything. Uh, I put five hundred thousand dollars simply because Jenkins was four hundred and forty thousand and I include a little bit of escalation, so that was really where that number came from. We're just starting those conversations, um, I have to get the application to the CPC, bring it to you, sure, you know, we're just beginning those conversations. But I wanted to get it on the list because it wasn't on the list before. And, and then similarly, in the spring of twenty twenty-seven, when the preschool goes to the new school, uh, we have a space now at Wompituck that'll be used for classrooms, right, and expectations, those rooms will be converted to classrooms. They're currently preschool classrooms with preschool bathrooms, and it's kind of a setup, so it, it's gonna require a little bit of work, more than just kind of, you know, our guys getting in there, so. I put it on the list, um, exactly what that's gonna mean, I'm not a hundred percent sure, we hired, uh, a, a firm called Silk Tech, that's a firm that's doing the Jenkins windows, they're gonna come in, do some back the nap and sketches for us this year to get some sense of what we could do with that space. We have two years before we have to deal with it. But I wanted to get it on the list, get the money appropriated so that we could start that work in earnest. Um, the rest of it is all stuff that's been there before, so I, you know, threw down the gauntlet on the high school air conditioning last year, it's still there. Um, I really appreciated all the students that did their civics projects around the air conditioning. It, it's hard, and I get it, um, so it's, it's on the list. Kids have some great ideas, mini splits and, and some wonderful ideas, so, um. So it's there, it just, it has to be prioritized with other things. And I just think, since we've already done the three locker rooms going into the gym, it's kind of the next iteration of, of that, so it just kind of keeps that whole kind of system going. And then way down the line, um, Jenkins floors and Wompituck roof, again, Wompituck roof was put on there a long time ago. I'm not aware of any issues currently with it, so other than just the fact that it's getting older and may need some help, but we have plenty of time to think about that. Um, Jenkins floors, again, I'm not a hundred percent sure of all the details with that, but it's been on the list for a while. School's twenty-five years old, it probably does need some construction, so let's get the windows in, we got a roof on, now we get the windows in, we're working our way around for, for making. So I'm excited about this, I, I think we'll, we'll receive some broad town support, Mr. Burkhead and I, in mid-September, representing this to Nancy Holt and, um, the town administrator, Jim Woodrow, and then he'll go through the process for capital planning and so forth. But I would appreciate a vote on this if it, as is or with amendments this evening, um, just so that I can say that the school committee had a public discussion on it.
Um, before we vote, I just wanted to ask a question about the Wompituck accessible playground. I'm happy to see that, I think what I wonder about is having been on capital planning and that wasn't, you know, something that just kind of came up in the spring. It just makes me wonder, like, are all the other playgrounds okay? I mean, the new one obviously will be, um, but I just kind of I'm thinking about the process by which we would identify the fact that we have inaccessible areas of schools, you know, like.
I think they're in pretty good shape because Ja- Jenkins is a brand new.
Well, Jenkins is a new one, Wompituck does have a new, like, new playground, but it's accessible, you don't have to necessarily consider pushing other new.
And then we'll have a new.
I guess even just beyond playgrounds, like, it just need, it just kind of made me wonder, like, if we've had the situation that's just sort of been sitting there and wasn't, you know, part of our thinking.
You mean accessibility?
Yeah, accessibility and.
Well, I think that we've, if the conversation about that particular playground
Yes.
Has been happening.
Has it, okay, I've not been aware of it, so.
Yeah, but I, my question is, we've been talking about it because the preschool, correct? Is it that, that play, that play, is that the, it's playground?
The back one, I think, right?
The back or like if you look at it to the left?
I thought it was the one to the left, but I could be.
Okay, okay.
I could be wrong, is it the preschool one they want to replace? Okay.
Well, my question is, should we put that money to the one to the left versus the preschool one? Because the preschool's gonna be moving up to the new school with a brand new playground. You know?
I could be, let me check on it, let me, let me just be sure.
Yeah, it would be good to look into that.
Not that, I mean, I, I'm not saying that, but like, we're gonna be.
Cause the front of the ground is accessible.
Yes.
Yes.
There is an accessible playground.
There is an accessible playground there, so it's just a matter of.
This is a second one that's onsite that's not as accessible, and they want to create one.
And there's one, if you look like the one to the left, but it's accessible, so that it's a drop off or pickup, that there's been, I think there's some equipment there that is, it's always.
You took a lot of stuff out of it.
Yeah.
I thought that's the one they want to replace, but I could be wrong.
I hope it's the one to the left, because I don't want to spend five hundred thousand dollars on a playground that, for, for the preschool, that's not gonna be there.
I'm almost positive it's the one on the left, let me just confirm.
Okay, no, that would be, yeah. Okay.
I really am, I, I, this, the idea of the preschool one, I would, wouldn't knock down, but it's.
Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure we're.
One hundred percent.
On top of this.
Let me do a little bit of research too, because the town also, back in twenty seventeen, did a whole master plan. And to some, some of those things have been fixed along, along the way, so let me do a little research and do a bit of update just to hammer on.
That's helpful, yeah, just to make sure we're.
Absolutely.
Uh, oh, I just had a question on the, um, the gym renovation, I think it's awesome. Can we increase that sculpt to include more than floors and bleachers like sound? Is there anything we can do next? Cause sound meanings are hell in there, and I think that there could be a way that we could increase or improve the sound in there, maybe the.
That may be an accessibility component as well.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know, I don't know what we kind of can include, but I would assume we want to.
I think, yeah, hearing and, and mobility.
Mm-hmm, that's true, yeah.
So can I recommend we just increase it to a million even?
Don't worry.
Yeah.
I mean, I know it's, it's, it sounds greedy, but it's important, so let's, let's.
No, it's, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
I think sound's always, I mean, we won't, we won't use it like twice a year for that, but just in general, it's terrible.
Audio, visual, right. But voting is currently taking place in there, I think just access.
Even like basketball game stuff, it would be not a problem, when they announce games and stuff, it would be better to hear clearer.
Yeah, 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 sure, I think accessibility is a, is an issue for the gym museum, definitely.
Yeah, that would be my recommendation, just let's vote it a million and all, change it.
For the town, yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
I would agree. Yeah, it's the original.
And you can also use, you can say, hey, it's just for the benefit of the whole community, it's not just a school.
Right, we want it to be sort of more of a community and access space.
Yeah.
Right.
And those components, if we're, it's capital aligned, it's not, yeah.
And it's. So that.
And anything else that would, that would make it a more comfortable environment for the parents and everything?
Absolutely.
And comment about the, want, the renovation of the preschool space, you said like the bathrooms and stuff. I don't think they've then actually updated the bathroom?
In the preschool, I don't think so.
I was gonna say, it was a kindergarten class.
Oh, could be, okay.
I went to kindergarten.
Oh, there you go, I, I think.
I use those bathrooms, it's just, you know.
I think there's also walls.
They probably get the six-year-olds using them, not.
You know, it's that whole set.
I don't know how my, I know they dumped them.
But that was, that's only been a preschool for a year, ever since this new school was built.
Yeah.
So it's only been a preschool for, yeah, a year.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think it's, hmm, it's probably the same.
And we don't have a whole lot of, uh, we have some ideas right now, but nothing's been put on paper.
Yeah.
The idea of this was to just get that conversation started, because we need to.
Yeah.
It might not be as much as we think.
May not.
Yeah.
No, thank you, I think this is great.
We can't push the air conditioning up, huh?
We can try, I'm just trying to be respectful of how much capital free cash, I've only contributed four hundred dollars to free cash, so.
That we've had millions of dollars in projects.
No, I'm teasing, but that, the idea is, we can, we can swap them, I mean, we could put air conditioning before the gym floor, that's a decision we certainly make, uh, it, this is a preference, it's not.
I think if we're gonna be renovating the gym, like doing major renovations, I think that, whatever we can do to, for the PA.
Yeah, that would be fine, I agree with that.
But the air conditioning wouldn't, your air conditioning recognition is just second floor, so it wouldn't impact the gymnasium either way.
Correct. That, this does not include the air conditioning in the gym. The air conditioning, we're constrained by the current electrical system here, so that's part of it too, you know, it, we're, there's some, you know, some things they can do, some things they can't do. My understanding, when we looked into it last year, um, the one point four billion is for the second floor, because that's where it's the worst.
Yeah, it's very. At the twenty twenty-eight date, that's on.
We hope that they're actually even just gonna fix it.
I can make a mo, I can make a motion to accept with amendments the, uh, capital plan fiscal year twenty-seven through thirty. That's presented and amended.
We'll call vote, Lin Wong?
I'll second.
I'll second. Second by Lin Wong. Benwick?
Yes.
McCosky?
Yes.
Lin Wong?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Brandalina, yes. Okay, great. Great. Looks like we are still going to continue with Dr. Rab here with the surplus.
A roll of the one here, okay. So rather than presenting the memos electronically, you have them in front of you, so there are three requests for surplus, which is typical this time of year. The, the first one is social studies, so we just bought a new social studies curriculum. Um, if you visited the Gates cafeteria last week, you would have seen four or five pallets of social studies textbooks all out there, kids labeling them the number, and they're all here, um, and, um, so at the end of the day, we do need to discard the books we have, so we will certainly recycle them, we'll discard them, we'll try to sell them to follow, that's what we try to do. Um, but I talked to the social studies department chairperson last week, and she said, you know, our social studies texts end with, you know, oh, the internet might take off someday. So, you know, I don't know how much people are really gonna want them, um, but. But, and, and in English as well, I mean, they're always updating the English curriculum, um, there is some money for some, some light updating for the English curriculum in this year's budget, so um, both department chairpersons went through and they, um, identified books that can be surplus, so that would really help them out to make sure that everything's clean. Um, do you want to do separate votes for either one, each, each memo, or do you want to big vote at the end? It's up to you.
Is this for the, um, I mean, they're written out separately.
Okay, that works.
And we'll just keep it as.
Well, maybe one of the off surplus, I mean.
There's the rate, the gates. This is for the textbooks, well, it's English and social.
It's just a lot of books, I always feel bad.
English and social studies, textbooks from Gates.
Getting rid of books.
We'll try to sell them, anyway, because you know, local public schools if they want them, it's just they're old, so people don't.
Not, not just the textbooks, but like the novels, Janice loves old books.
No, I'm just, we'll, we will try to sell them, I'll be honest, because we can spend a lot of money on them.
I do like that.
Do you want the books?
I mean, I don't think we need a hundred and thirty-nine copies of Seagulls.
They also wear out, it, it's not even so much that they're being replaced in the curriculum, it's more just they wear out.
Yeah, right, yeah. Yeah.
They're well-loved, Janice.
I, I know.
Do you want me to make a motion so you don't have to do it?
What else can we tell you, Janet?
Um, I will move that we, uh, vote to approve the English and social studies surplus of textbooks.
Second? How many can I say?
I'll say. Awesome, okay.
All right. Gates?
Yes.
McCosky?
Yes.
Benwick?
Yes.
Lin Wong?
Yes.
Brandalina, yes.
We have an email from Jim Thomas, Department Chair of Fine and Performing Arts, we just have a piano that's broken, um, and he just needs to throw it out. It's not, um, any, it's got a cracked soundboard, which basically destroys the piano, so, um, he doesn't need to replace it, he's not looking to replace it. You know, every now and then people will donate pianos, it's, it's not really hard to get to donating piano.
I have one.
Yeah, see, he can, there, hook me five seconds. So, um, but he does need to throw this one away, and, um, we can, if the custodial staff, you're okay to dispose of it with your vote.
Okay, take a motion on the, the piano recycling situation.
All right, I move that we vote to approve the surplus of the non-original piano from the S H S performances. Second?
Janice got it.
Okay, Gates?
Yes.
Edwick, yes. Lindlau?
Yes.
Rokoski?
Yes.
Randallini, yes. Okay.
And similarly at Jenkins, you know, from the budget, we did have replacement grade by grade for tables and chairs in the budget. Um, so we do need to surplus the current ones. We ordered the new ones, um, they're in, but we do need to surplus the um, the hundred and twenty student desks, hundred and twenty student chairs. Uh, they're original from two thousand one, which doesn't seem that long ago, but it is twenty five years ago, and twenty four years ago. And um, they're in tough shape. I mean, I did see some pictures of that. Um, you know, they're the very traditional desks. Um, so again, we will try to to sell them to anybody who might be interested.
I love how you're, you're sort of flooring it. This is concerning.
To Janice and her. While like donating, I mean, they must be organizations out there.
We'll certainly look into it. Um, sometimes they do, we'll we'll absolutely look into it. I'll talk to the principals tomorrow.
You can.
We did, I'll be honest with you, we did offer the staff, if anybody wanted one, they can have one. So sometimes people like that.
Kids who play school, I don't know. Right?
So anyway, that's it.
Kids who play school.
Yeah. All right, I will move that we approve the surplus of desks and chairs from Jenkins Elementary.
All right, we have a second on that.
Second.
If we move Mr. Gates?
Lindlau?
Yes.
Edwick?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Rokoski?
Yes.
Randallini, yes. Excellent. All right, thank you, Dr. Rob. All right, um, that's. All right, so uh, old business, just a quick update. We had our school committee retreat. And that was a nice opportunity for us to reconnect after summer break. Started working on crafting our school committee goals for the year, or what we hope to. Identify um, few goals that will last more than a year, hopefully three years or so. Thinking on that and looking at our calendar, talking about um, F C L in our district. Looking to deep dive into anti-bullying efforts and our policy there. I'll see something is going to begin work on that. Anyone else want to talk a little bit more about our retreat or anything to add to that?
So I would, oh, go ahead, Maria.
I was just gonna say, we do need to sharpen up our goals.
We do.
So we kind of came to a general thought, but um, I'm going to really just insist that we smart smarten them.
Absolutely.
Um, so that means we're gonna need to include some, you know, some time bound, measured.
I agree.
I think we're like on the right path, um, but we need to figure out who and when and how we're gonna take those next steps.
Yeah. I was going to say the same, and I was wondering if we should maybe, I think what's worked in the past is if two of us have maybe. Taken that on in a pair, in a little subcommittee, as we can only do that, I work in.
Yeah.
A pair, as that is, uh, if we go to three, we are breaking the open meeting law in our five person committee. So um, as always, looking for two volunteers to take that work on. I'm sure everyone's calendars are looking like or availability. I'm obviously happy to do it.
I don't mind, I mean, I don't mind helping either. I feel like.
Okay.
It's been a couple of years. So I would did wanna, I had two thoughts. One was based on the workshop we did today with math. I'm also wondering if we need to not only sharpen those goals, but just make sure these are the goals like that we're landing on. Cause I I felt like some of the things that the facilitator shared were a little different than what we approached. So I'm not, I'm not suggesting we change, but I think it's worth a conversation to just make sure. Um, and thinking about the district, you know, the strategic plan. The other thing, yeah, the other thing I wanted to add, and this is just a related, but on the side, I um. On the media happens to be doing this really great several part series on um, the education of boys in particular. And what came up today was the importance of social emotional learning and relationships. And they were saying for everybody, and I thought it was, it might be something we wanna listen to individually, just as we're thinking about social emotional learning in the district. It was a very research informed, um, they've done some multi-year studies on this and it was really interesting to see some of the results. And it was very related to the conversation we had at the retreat, so I just thought it was very timely.
Sure, absolutely. Um, also wanted to thank Maria and Dr. Rob for getting our data binders up and running, even though I didn't bring mine today. I'm asking for a um, six, like a pink slip or something for today, just for some kind of an. Some kind of an excuse um, for myself, cause I had a bad weekend. Uh, but um, otherwise, I promise to have my data binder and I much appreciate your efforts in putting that together for our committee. I think they're gonna be really helpful in. Organization and just keeping us focused in our work and task. I'm looking forward, but I can't believe I don't have mine with me today because I am supporter of the data binder and stay.
Nicole, I I also wanted to add one other thing. Um, I also appreciated the committee's conversation and Ryan's contributions around the SIP process. Um, I think folks who have been attending school committee meetings know it was a, you know, it was a challenging conversation that we had with principals. And so I think just foreshadowing that we're looking forward to improving that process and making sure that we're able to support the principals and give and help them with what they need. Um, when they think about those improvement plans. So I'm I'm excited about that work. So just for folks who are watching to sort of, that's what's coming.
And on that note, one of the things we learned today in our workshop was that we should be on school councils, so we'll need to figure out who is gonna do which school and how that's all gonna work.
Yeah, we gotta get confirmation on that.
I looked it up in M G L when we were sitting there.
Yeah.
Says nothing about us not being on them, so I'm not sure where that came from. I mean, I remember.
I know, it's very crystal clear about that.
Conversations we had, but it's not in master plan that I.
And it's not required, so I don't know that we.
It's required.
It's not required. I think we need to have a longer conversation about what that might look like, just because. I I don't disagree like with the conversation was it's helpful to have school committee members, and I totally agree with everybody who was saying. It's a training ground of sorts for future school committee members, cause I, you know, I started P T O and then on school council, so I don't disagree. I just wanna make sure that because our councils are so small, I wanna make sure that that many people have voices in the community and that I'm not taking a place on a seat where I already have a voice, which is in school committee. So I just wanna be really mindful of that piece um, before I jump back on or attempt to jump back on, you know, a school council. So that was just, I'm not making any suggestions one way or the other. It's just something that came up for me was sort of like making sure that we have. You know, multiple voices represented in those spaces where where possible, so just making room for other people at the the table and in the conversations.
Yeah, to that point, I wasn't sure if Sean was suggesting that school committee members are voting or not voting members of councils. I wasn't sure about that. So that's something we should think about and follow up on. And secondly, I think we can do more um, to try to communicate with potentially interested parents about what school council is. Because I do think that's just still a thing that a lot of parents might not understand. Um, and I think we can do a better job collectively at explaining what school councils are tasked with and making sure that school council members feel adequately supported to do their jobs, especially since we've been on them.
Yeah, I totally agree.
Yeah, I just think like to your point about getting more voices, part of it is I wonder if we're not getting more hands raised even at the outset is because there's still some uncertainty about what the goal is.
Yeah, I a hundred percent agree, Maria. I was even thinking like, does it make sense to coordinate with the principal and whomever ends up being like a co-chair for us to visit? Right? And and, you know, I don't know, just talk about individually. I mean, we should come up with a message, obviously the five of us, but we don't go at the same time, just to get to know the school council a little bit to like, I don't know. And and of course, we'd wanna talk to the central office to make sure that was okay, but just just another thought to build relationships with the school council, not just, you know.
Yes.
SIP process.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we can consult with Sean and Costello and see.
Yeah, I'd be curious to understand how other people, other districts do this.
How our field runs. Yep.
Um, cause I'm sure we're not the only one with that thought, Carrie. I think we all agree, you know, we would wanna overly have a voice. Um, but I think that certainly like in the interest of strengthening the process um, for some of the stuff that school councils have to do.
Just be like a guide.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sure Sean can help us do that.
Love to answer the voting or non-voting, cause that would impact the ratio.
Oh, it's not, yeah. Uh, the ratio is, that's what's prescribed in M G L is the ratio educators to.
Right.
Non educators.
Lucky you, remember.
One, one to one. And so that's what we wouldn't wanna necessarily like throw off, you know?
I wouldn't think, I would think we would not vote.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we can consult with.
Yeah, let's see what Sean says.
Especially with those very small other.
That's a good idea.
Okay, check on that. Yeah, so, okay, so goal setting for 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 our goals.
Carrie and I will think the next step.
Okay. So you're gonna sort of work on what we started with and see if we need to, based on our workshop today, sort of get back into our lane, I guess you could say. Make sure that we're in our lane and fine tune some of those goals that we started.
I mean, I think we are in our lane.
Yeah.
I think part of our lane, what he was saying was, you know, helping come to the district goals.
Yes.
So that has to come before we can finalize our goals, so that's the process.
So you're trying to think about the strategic plan?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess that's, I I think it'd be good to have a conversation about this, cause like, I feel like we, what I was hearing from our facilitator was that our goals do not have to be the same as the superintendent's goals, but they have to align with the strategic plan. So when he used the example of communication, that was like a throwback for us, right? Cause that's what we used to do. And so I just wanna make sure that we all feel comfortable with the goals that we're setting and they're and they're not, you know. Yeah, I mean, I don't know what they should be. I mean, I like where we were going with them, but he threw, he threw me, it's sort of a curve ball when I heard that communication goal, right? Cause that seemed a little bit different than what we had talked about in our treat.
Yeah, I mean, Bill Superintendent Burke had asked that question too, like you were saying your goal. You asked that question too, about your goal, our goals, and then going to the district goal.
Right.
Because the district goal has to come first.
Right.
District goal first. That's what drives all the other. Your goals and our goals are in the same layer.
Exactly.
But our goals, yours and ours don't have to be the same, but they both also have to go back to district.
Right.
Which is the strategic plan.
Which is new to us.
Right.
I felt like he was saying for the, but I felt like he was saying for the sake of argument, like you don't have to have the same goals, but they should.
But they both have to, we don't have to have the same goals, but both of our goals have to go back to the district goal.
Well, he said if they align with the district goals, that they will eventually like support each other is what he was saying.
Right, yeah, okay.
That makes sense.
So ultimately they end up aligning as always.
But they don't have to be the same is what he was saying, right?
They're happening.
Right, like, cause we have multiple goals in the district plan, so we may choose different one for our own.
Yes. Yep, yeah. Yeah, except if we choose a goal that we're not directly in charge of overseeing, then how would that get accomplished?
Well, right.
So you know what I'm saying, like if we go a different direction.
Yes, because the strategic plan has multiple initiatives.
And we have to choose something that we have control over, cause we won't be able to accomplish it without, right, the 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 rest of the team.
Right, if we choose a completely different initiative, then the district is.
Right, so that wouldn't, we could.
Focusing on.
But it probably wouldn't be the best.
That would be.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying we choose something that we don't have purview over, but I'm just saying, I don't think, I think there are lots of goals that we have purview over that it wouldn't necessarily align with the superintendent's goals. I mean, I can think of, I mean, that's what we've done in the past. And they all still line up to the district, so um. I'm just not sure that the goals we have now are, I don't know, I just think we should look at them again based on.
Oh, yeah. I think it would be helpful to talk to Sean again too, and get more information from him.
Yeah.
So we're talking about school councils and the goals.
Yes, yeah.
Perfect.
Okay.
Maybe it's what he's there for.
Yeah, I agree.
That's what he's there for.
Sure. Okay. Um, anything else about our treaty or anything anybody wants to add? Thank you for connecting with Sean.
Yeah.
Convenient to have him right next door. And we started our S E T V town updates again. Thank you to Seth this morning. Sure, you're great. Yeah, we have a template. To um, set us on track to have just a a format for our updates every week, so that that is an easy um, format to plug into for our. Um, I don't think I shared it yet. But I will. I was in a car accident this weekend and I, I'm just not, I'm just totally not, I don't know where I am, but I'm not right here. I'll be back soon, you know?
But we do need to tell Seth soon what our um, preferences are in terms of being part of that, so we do need you guys to let us know, who will I know.
Uh, sure. Ms. Randallini, you wanna just email me whatever you have, we can discuss?
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah, if you wanna be in the rotation.
You guys, yeah.
Still same, it's on Mondays at eight thirty?
Mondays at nine thirty.
Nine thirty.
So we can do our regular rotation, or if you're not, well, if you don't wanna be in the rotation or.
Okay.
Great, most Mondays.
Some will be holidays.
Some will be on.
Sometimes we do.
They go Tuesday.
Oh, yeah.
But with the template, it's just pretty easy.
Sounds good.
Great. Anything else? We have uh, some minutes from June sixteenth for approval. Questions? Not, let's take a motion.
I'll make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the June sixteenth, twenty twenty five minutes as presented.
I'll second. Ms. Edwick? Okay, um, Gates?
Yes.
Rokoski?
Yes.
Lindlau?
Yes.
Edwick?
Yes.
Randallini?
Yes.
Morris?
None, it's too.
Today, respondents is. In there, other business?
Um, this, I'll just quickly mention that um, we don't have our school committee reps here tonight. Uh, I did meet with Control Arranger and um, Sam Lesniak to talk about kind of what the committee may be looking for in terms of our student reps going forward, so we expect them to, they haven't been selected yet. Uh, we would expect um, at one of our September meetings that they'll be here. Just trying to increase their role, let them know that they actually are technically a part of, or non-voting part of our committee. And to see if there's any students in our district that are really involved in civic action or whatever. So we're hoping to find some uh, members that might be able to facilitate that manner, so we'll see what happens.
Great. Good.
And the only other thing is to um, were we supposed to vote on meeting dates?
Um, yes, we will do that. Um, oh, vote on meeting dates.
Yeah, I think we're supposed to vote on them, so that the, I think so.
Vote on them?
It's the vote on the meeting.
I hope we vote on them.
I don't, I don't remember.
I think we're doing on the, we have to post them.
Well.
We have to post in the, the dates of our meetings.
Will we post them? You mean like publish them?
Public, like, like.
Yeah, yeah, they go on the website.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, so when's?
But they, they change, will they?
So like, when's our next meeting?
So moving publicly.
September eighth.
September eighth.
But right now, we are currently scheduled on Rosh Hashanah.
Yeah, I mean. Right, that hasn't been moved yet, I think we're moving.
So we. If we're gonna move that, we should do it sooner or later, so it's on the calendar.
Right. Right. Sarah had asked me today about the, this calendar of presentations, I told her that I would get back to her within the next day or two about it. So we'll, we can, we can vote on, if we are voting, we'll confirm that we have to vote the school year of dates.
I think we, well, we vote the summer ones.
Yeah, we did.
So I, I think we usually vote the annual meeting.
All right, so we, we'll vote those um, on the.
Do we want to talk about changing the twenty-second now?
But I think we did.
Rosh Hashanah is the start.
Yeah, I, well, let's do that.
Now, it's on, it's listed. I have the twenty-third and twenty-four, okay.
We had confirmed that Rosh Hashanah was a.
Nine and the twenty-second, so.
Yeah.
Started sundown on the twenty-second.
Right, we had confirmed that that was a holiday, and that we were not gonna be that day.
Okay, so there was no meeting on the twenty-second.
Well, we'll have to move it, I just had to move it, because I was in the car accident.
So we could just potentially move that one week, right?
Well, I think we probably, maybe Bill and I can connect this week and figure out.
Yeah, do you wanna just vote on your next meeting, at least, and at that meeting, put on the agenda for the rest of the year?
For the, the series of, yeah, I think there's some.
I think that's usually what we do.
Presentation lineup, we wanted to.
Well, that does not have to be worked out right now, does it?
The dates, just the dates.
But just the dates, yeah, because we might have to, we could have changed them.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I mean, will that, I think moving would go with.
Yeah, we can vote on it next week.
Yeah, we can vote on the dates on September eighth.
Okay. Our next meeting will be September eighth.
At which time, we will vote on the remaining dates of the school committee calendar for twenty-five, twenty-six, for. Yeah.
Yes, this one's. But we do publish them.
Yes. Well, I, yes, but I guess we're also waiting for the transition to the new.
Yeah, those are just.
Website and app. But we can do that, yeah, but we'll vote the rest of the.
It's not a future agenda item.
Yeah, because if we move the twenty-second, I guess that probably bumps.
Or we can do a back-to-back, right? We can just do a back-to-back, sure, that might be the better way to do it.
Okay. Yeah.
So we're just gonna vote on the next meeting? Right now, do we have to do it right now?
No.
Can you do it then?
No, 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 do we have to vote on having a meeting on the eighth? No.
We didn't vote on having a meeting tonight.
I'm not clear if we vote on, I'll vote on when we have meetings. We didn't vote on tonight's meeting. I thought we did last summer. Okay. We're good, I don't know. I think we just looked at the future, the calendar.
Because we had to vote on whether.
So for this whole school year.
Right.
And then, I don't think we voted on it, we just kind of looked at it for like.
We technically should.
Oh, like, oh, the twenty-second, let's move it, this one, yeah, I don't think we voted on it, we did look at it.
Yeah.
About this. Okay.
We can just second.
Yeah. All right, so we're back here on the eighth.
Yes. Next school committee meeting is September eighth. Twenty-five. All right, anything else?
That's it?
All right, any other future agenda items? All right? Taking a motion.
Voting to adjourn at seven twenty-eight.